I'd like to call the February eighth, or ninth, 2012 meeting of City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knutson.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Fryling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Our first order of business today is council minutes from the meeting of January ninth, January 12th, and January 21st, retreat of City Council. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the council meeting minutes from January 9th and January 12th, 2012, and the retreat minutes from January 21st, 2012.
Second.
A motion and a second, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
I think we have no matters of special privilege today, and that brings us to the next agenda item, which is public hearings. This is a long-term special event application for Revolutionary City, Proposed Resolution 12-02. Jack, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, I would. Having successfully presented the Revolutionary City program for the past five years, Colonial Williamsburg Foundation has now applied for the issuance of a second long-term special events license in accordance with Chapter Nine of the Article Two of the City Code, in order for the program to continue for another five years. So, the code requires that a public hearing be held prior to the council taking action on a resolution that would extend the license. An application has been received from John Bacon, Senior Vice President for External Affairs and Secretary of the Foundation, and he is here along with associates from Colonial Williamsburg. So, at this point, we can open the public hearing and go from there.
Any questions for Jack before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to the matter. Please come forward, state your name and address. Mr. Bacon?
Thank you. Mayor Holman and members of council, Mr. Tuttle, and members of the city staff, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this afternoon to request consideration of a second long-term special events license to continue to present the Revolutionary City program in the historic area. My name is John Bacon. I'm here this afternoon with my colleagues Diane Schwartz, Director of Historic Area Operations, and Richard Schuman, one of Colonial Williamsburg's leading actor interpreters, perhaps better known to you as his alter ego, Patrick Henry. As you can see, Richard is here as himself this afternoon, so I'm not expecting any "give me liberty" or "give me death" pronouncements on this occasion. The Revolutionary City program was first introduced to guests in the historic area in 2006. Over the past five years, the program has become a cornerstone of Colonial Williamsburg's efforts to portray the life and times of Williamsburg during the revolutionary era, and in so doing, to draw connections with issues of the present day. The program is a dramatic street theater event, drawing on the talents of specially-trained and experienced actor interpreters who represent the range of people who populated this community during the war years, from Henry, Jefferson, and Washington, to the traitor Benedict Arnold, to African-American preacher Galen Pamphlet, to members of the Randolph household wrestling with the decision whether to support the Crown or the new nation, to Native Americans here on treaty negotiations. The program consists of sequential scenes and street activities that together convey the drama, conflict, hardship, inconsistencies, and triumph of those critical years. Over these last five years, the program's storylines have evolved, technological support has improved, and staging has been designed to maximize the impact on the audience. Access to the program has been managed so that holders of admission tickets, or good neighbor or student passes, can participate in the program free of intrusions or interruptions. The program has been central to the Foundation's efforts to fulfill its mission of education and citizenship, and it's been a critical element of our marketing and communications efforts in terms of presenting what Colonial Williamsburg is about and why people should be drawn to this experience. The media attention to this particular program has been strong and consistently favorable, and includes major placements in the Washington Post Magazine, Travel &amp; Leisure, National Geographic Traveler, Newsweek, and numerous regional publications and broadcasts. In short, the program has become fundamental to the Colonial Williamsburg experience. We're grateful to council for its grant of original license to offer this program in 2006, and we thank you for considering a second license at this time. If I may, I'll yield to my colleague, Richard Schuman, to say just a few words about the experience from the inside in terms of guest participation and reactions.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Your worship. Honored counselors. As stated, Richard Schuman, I've lived here in Williamsburg, now in the Bruton District of York County, actually, for 32 years, and half of that time I have been in the employ of Colonial Williamsburg portraying Mr. Henry. I have been fortunate to have participated in Revolutionary City since its inception five years ago, and I was, based on that, I was asked to maybe share just a very brief set of experiences or my general feelings about the effectiveness of this program. I'm confident that I don't have to tell anybody in this room that Williamsburg is a very special and unique place. As Mr. Henry, I frequently refer to Williamsburg as the birthplace of American liberty, and if there's anyone here from Boston or Philadelphia, I've got plenty of ammunition to back up that argument. Coming to know Mr. Henry as I have, and many of the other founders, their belief was, their knowledge was, that a republic such as this that we have created here in this nation cannot survive nor flourish lest we have an engaged citizenry, a public who's paying attention, and I'm happy to report that Revolutionary City works much to that end. This is not regular outdoor theater such as you might see in other places. It's not for the purpose so much of amusement or entertainment, no song and dance. Well, there is some, somewhere. But, the overall message that people walk away from is that, you know, I should pay a bit more attention. These are troubled times throughout the whole of this country. Anyone who pays attention to the news, reads the newspapers, knows that. And, well, just today, I was reading in the newspaper about a number of political pundits around the country who were wringing their hands about the very low turnout in some of the recent primary elections out in the western reaches. And, the speculation is, it's because of complete apathy, or indifference, or ignorance, the very things that the founding fathers cautioned in seeing this republic work or not work. We see people get engaged here at Revolutionary City. And I don't only speak of people cheering when George Washington makes a speech and says something great, or jeering when Benedict Arnold comes on the scene, or people who are actually screaming at him as he rides by, you know, "traitor," and suffering his wrath for doing so. But, we have instances where people are actually participating. We have, for example, the scene in front of the Raleigh Tavern, where we have a number of men who come up onto the stage there in front of the Raleigh Tavern, and they participate as the jury, presiding over the case of Joshua Hardcastle, the hated Tory hoarder, who's been speaking disparagingly about General Washington and his men and the cause of liberty. I'm not a part of that scene myself, but I'm able to watch it from a distance, and it's just wonderful to behold these people, these gentlemen who are taking this position very seriously. They listen to the evidence presented, they ponder it, they pronounce his sentence, always guilty, and then it's up to the whole crowd to determine his fate. We're going to tar and feather him? A lot of people are very passionate about, yes, I want to see that tar and feather him. But, you also see people who are thinking about it. And, the payoff for me, as an interpreter, is that I can't tell you how many times people have come up to me afterwards, and they've all said, you know, I couldn't help but think during that tar and feather scene, that that's just like today. Occupy Wall Street, or the Tea Party movement or something, puts things in a whole new perspective. That's the effect that Revolutionary City has on a number of these people. I'm not suggesting that they go home and run for political office by getting engaged in that manner, but they continue to talk about it, when they get home, too, and we can only hope that they go to vote the next time an election rolls around. For anyone who questions whether there is this general indifference around America with regard to our political world, all you have to do is tune into a segment that shows on the Tonight Show with Jay Leno called Jaywalking, where every once in a while, he approaches people on the street, presumably in California where they broadcast the show, and he asks them the most fundamental and basic questions about governance. And, the answers of these people, at least the ones that they choose to air, are shocking and alarming. I think Colonial Williamsburg gets that message across to a lot of our visitors, if not all of them, that the future can and must learn from the past. And, so, I hope that that might go far towards persuading some of you to give us this extension of this great program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. If anyone else wishes to speak to the long-term special event application, please come forward. If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for any questions or comments and action.
Mr. Mayor, as an employee of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I will refrain from discussing or commenting upon this application and abstain from voting upon it.
Scott?
I have no questions. Scott?
Yeah, question, I think. And, I don't know to whom, but what we're being asked to do is limit access to a public street, which will obviously not allow citizens who may not have the pass that entitles them to get through there, to be on the street. How do we reconcile, or from your perspective, what is the value that the city gets and the city residents get from allowing this to happen?
When we asked for this the first time five years ago, the reasons to manage the access were primarily to be able to present the kind of dramatic experience that Richard has described in a setting free from any 21st century interruption or intrusion. The impact of the program is immeasurably stronger done that way. It also is a clear statement about the value of that ticket that the participant holds, which is an economic value to Colonial Williamsburg and to the city. The permit then and now, the license then and now, provides for a maximum period of two and a half hours out of the day to manage access. That includes setup and takedown time. The actual time of the program is an hour to an hour and 15 minutes. We think that the reactions of the guests that we have been able to gather, the kinds of attention that the program has drawn from the outside, has confirmed, at least to us, that managing the access in order to present the program in this way has been worthwhile, both economically in the sense of the value of the ticket, but more importantly, worthwhile in terms of creating the kind of engagement and dialogue that Richard spoke of, enabling people to think, to consider the issues in a way that a more static or traditional interpretive program can't do. This program was based on guest research that asked for more immersion, more participation, more interactivity in the experience. This is one effort by Colonial Williamsburg among others, but the leading effort to try and respond to that research. I don't know if I'm responding to it.
Yeah, and that's kind of, I mean, in my mind, that's what I knew the answer to be. I just, I think it was important that you had the opportunity to share that with some people who may feel that, you know, limiting access is not a good idea, because they don't understand the value that they get. And I think when you talk about just the ROI, the economic value of, you know, of the ticket, kind of resonates with the residents. And I certainly see the value of this going forward. Have you all considered expanding the program to a longer length of time, or maybe even broader area within the historic areas, or a benefit to doing that, or do you think you're pretty much at capacity now of what you're trying to accomplish?
I guess I would say that, I would say we've considered it in the sense of we're always thinking about how the program can evolve, and if it becomes apparent to us that there would be benefit, both financial and programmatically, to either expanding it, or putting it in a different part of the historic area, or putting it at a different time of day than what we've done for the last five years, that's something that we would like to first develop internally and then come back to you and have a conversation whether we collectively think that there would be value in that kind of an approach. So, I guess I would say, in asking council to consider a five-year license, we all need to acknowledge that program planning and thinking will go on during that five-year period, and it's probably more likely than not that we will have ideas about things that we could do to improve it, which could affect the access. But, as of today, we have no plans to do anything other than what we've done previously.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Judy?
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. As you all know, we've been having lots of internal discussions among council about tourism, because we're seeing our revenue drop and stuff. And, one of the things that we have looked at, or I have looked at about tourism, is people do, want exactly what you're saying. They want active participation. There aren't no, they're not interested in passive looking at things anymore. They want to be part of. And I have not heard one bad thing from anybody about Rev. City. I mean, I think it's been a wonderful thing, and we've gotten great publicity from it. So, I think this is a well-deserved extension.
Thank you. I guess the question I have is, could you tell us a little bit about how you see this fitting into the broader educational mission of Colonial Williamsburg, and how does this interact with the other types of things you do, say, the electronic classroom? And I, you know, some of them may not have interactions, but some may. So, give us some perspective on sort of how you see this as part of the big picture, big educational picture of what Colonial Williamsburg does.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would put it all under the umbrella of education for citizenship, which is the overriding theme that we follow. And, these different programs that you reference all have a place in that universe. I think the electronic field trips, for example, may come closest to what we do in Revolutionary City, because we have obviously much more freedom to portray and to be dramatic in that format. But, I think to come back to something that Ms. Knutson just said, it's very clear to us from all the research that we do, that the way people learn and engage is through interactivity, through participation, through feeling like they are, if you'll forgive the slogan, that they are part of the story. And, this program tries to put them in that place. So, I think when we look at the array of programming that we do, whether it's onsite in the historic area, whether it's online and distance learning, Revolutionary City is probably the flagship of all of that, and we are looking for ways programmatically to extend that, maybe not necessarily in a physical sense, but extend that approach through the different channels that we have. This is the time of year for us, as for most organizations, where we're deep into planning and budgeting and so forth, so we are actually thinking quite hard about our program approach, not only this year, but for the next three or four years, and how this program can evolve. It was the new thing for us five years ago, and it had the benefit of a new thing in terms of guest reaction and publicity and all that. It's not new today. It needs to evolve, and we need to have other things that come on behind it, and so that's what we're trying to do.
Right. Thank you very much. And, any further questions?
Response to Councilman Pons' comment, you talked about evolving within the next five years, you know. I'm happy to approve this two-and-a-half-hour block. If you all come back to us in that interim, be more than happy to hear, you know, whatever new innovation you come up with. I mean, this is for five years, but if in the meantime, need to be longer to adapt to something exciting you all come up with, I'm personally more than open to that.
Well, I appreciate that sentiment, Ms. Foster, and actually, I hope that, and would like to assure you that we will come back in the sense that if we're not innovating and coming back to you with new ideas, then we all have other issues.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, or your worship, whoever. I'd like to propose that we adopt Proposed Resolution 12-02, a long-term special event license agreement with Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for the Revolutionary City program for the period March 1st, 2012, through December 31st, 2016.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Abstain.
Mr. Foster.
Thank you. Thank all of you for being here today, too. Thank you.
Do we need to get you a new nameplate?
I think we all erase that from the collective memory going forward.
I think we need to do a tires more.
Right. Do I get to wear a powder wig? Oh, boy.
You and I could use one.
Yeah, I could use lots of them. Okay. Our next agenda item is reports, first of monthly financial statements, Jack, anything?
Well, one thing to point out, on page five, you look at the December results in room tax, meals tax, and sales tax, and we had a good December. The meals tax alone was up 13 and a half percent, and the dollars, the highest we have had in, going back to before, 2008. Room tax, we were up 3.6 percent from the same month last year, and you have to go all the way back to 2008 to get the same level, to get higher at any rate. And, also, our sales tax was up 6, 5 percent, and again, you go all the way back, 2007, 2008, to get to those same numbers. So, it was a good December, and let's just hope that it's a sign of things to come.
Any questions for Jack? Financial statements? Monthly department operating reports, anything in particular, Jack?
Just the, there's a list of new businesses that are in the, under the city manager reports. You see several there, including Brick House Tavern pulled their license, the Dog Street Pub, which will open, we hope, in a few months, and a number of others, some of those, such as Mad About Chocolate, also businesses coming in, Quarter Path Dental Center, and some of these are home businesses. But, we'd like to see a good stock of new businesses every month, and that's good to see.
And, I'll also mention that extraordinary cupcakes opened, and they are indeed extraordinary. Any questions on department operating reports?
I had a couple. One is for Mr. Barham. It's under the information technology, and this is just because I don't understand it. You mentioned successfully piloted 4G mobile hotspots that replaces the 3G. I don't know what that means.
Good afternoon. That's a lot of technical jargon for how the laptops that are in every fire department vehicle, how they communicate back so that they are mobile out in the field. What we did, Verizon, if you recall, came out recently with the 4G technology, which is essentially the code name for it's a whole lot faster. So, we put those in the vehicles to make the vehicles connect a whole lot faster.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any further?
Yeah, under key indicators, it just kind of dawned on me as Mr. Tuttle was talking about some of the receipts in hotels, and I was thinking about, we talked about occupancy, or number of rooms rented. I wonder if we couldn't add in here the matrix, because we can identify how many rooms we have in the city, and then we can correlate that to the revenue, so we can figure out, and then the $2 tax. So, we can figure out what the city's average daily rate is, what the city's occupancy is, and make that part of the report.
Okay.
I think would be a useful tool, particularly as it relates to other reports that are available to the city that we use as performance measurement items. And then, we can also include timeshares, since there's multiple timeshares in town.
Right. Thanks. Thank you.
And then, I had one other one, and it's under human services, and I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Barham for fixing this, so it's easier to navigate around in the monthly report. I can find things faster. So, I just thought it was interesting to note, I don't know if anybody else read it, that our self-sufficiency program has been complimented by the federal government for, along with Tom Nelson, for being a really good program. And I think in this era of job problems and economic problems, it's really interesting that we have such a good self-sufficiency program that people have noticed, and we're really helping the people who live in the city. So, thank you, Pete.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll move to city manager reports, and we have one, which is a singular wireless lease amendment. Jack?
Yes. Dan Clayton.
Dan?
Yeah, before you today, an amendment to the lease agreement we have with AT&amp;T for cell phone antenna and equipment at our Jamestown Road water tank. The amendment allows for three additional antenna and equipment at the site. These modifications are needed by AT&amp;T to accommodate the new 4G technology. The amendment also comes along with an annual rent increase from $29,000 to $37,540. This is pretty much mirrors the lease amendment that came before you in December with Verizon Wireless, so it's pretty much the same thing. They've been cooperating on moving their antenna so they can make room for each other, and Verizon's in a process now of doing their antenna. We have also requested an updated site plan showing the improvements of the tank site, and expect that site plan any day now. We've met on the site, so we know exactly what's going to happen out there. So, that's about it. With that, we recommend that you folks approve the amendment to the lease.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan?
No, sir.
Thank you. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, contingent upon receipt and approval by the Director of Public Works of a site plan, showing the exact location of the additional equipment as provided in the amendment.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Our next report is city attorney reports, and this is adoption of Code Supplement Number 24, Proposed Ordinance 12-01.
Periodically, we come to council and ask council to adopt the electronic supplement. This is the supplement for 2011, and we would ask the city council to approve that.
This is just housekeeping.
It is.
Any questions for Chris? Not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt Proposed Ordinance 12-01.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Our next agenda item is unfinished business. Is there any? I don't believe we have any. That will move to new business, and I believe we have several appointments. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council appoint Planning Commissioner Demetrius Florakis to serve as the commission's representative on the Architectural Review Board for a term to expire December 31, 2015. I also move that city council adopt Resolution 12-03, a recommendation to the Circuit Court Judge for the reappointment of the following persons to the Board of Equalization, for the terms effective July 1, 2012, to expire as designated. David Hertzler II, June 30, 2013. Barbara Baganakis, June 30, 2014. Jack Marston, June 30, 2015. Sharon Baker, June 30, 2015. And Robert Tex Turner, June 30, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Our final agenda item for the day is open forum. This is a time for anyone who wishes to address city council on any matter to do so. If you wish to address council, please come forward, state your name and address, and we're here to hear you. If not, I believe we have something for closed session?
We do. Oh, okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, for the purpose of discussing one legal matter per subparagraph seven, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel regarding a personnel matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman. Mr. Foster.
We'll take a five-minute recess and come back into...